Okay, you ready? Call this regularly scheduled meeting in the Neptuna County Planning and Zoning Commission to order at 5:30 PM on the 11th of August. Introduction of staff members. Our Development Department Director, Jason Gutierrez. Our planner is Trish Chavez. I think he's not here tonight. Our Deputy County Attorney is Charmaine Reed. Planning Commission Members, my far right is Commissioner Jim Brown. My immediate right is Commissioner Hal Hutchison. My far left is Commissioner Tom Davis. My immediate left is Bob Bailey, Commissioner. I'm Chairman Harold Wright. This Commission is an Advisory Board of the Neptuna County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each application on the agenda, we will hold an official public hearing. The hearings are recorded and there will be written minutes of this meeting. Along with that, in case I leave it out, when we open it up for discretion, come forward to the podium, give your name and address clearly, please. After the Commission holds a public hearing unless the application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public hearing for the application. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to duress...
No, that's you.
...address the Commission. First, those in favor of the application may address the Commission. Then, those opposed to the application may address the Commission. Finally, the applicant may be given a brief rebuttal. When the Chair recognizes you, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly. Remember, these minutes are being recorded. Hopefully, we don't have an unruly bunch tonight, so I'm not going to get into the rest of this thing. Minutes of the last meeting, please. Going to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, since we had our additional meeting last night, we approve the minutes of the July meeting at that meeting.
With that, then, we'll move on to the public hearing. VC 20-3, a variance request to reduce the eastern setback from 25 feet to 20 feet to allow for a 20 by 15 by 32 park mobile home. Can I have staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have VC 20-3. It's a variance to the setbacks in the mobile home district. An application by Jerry and Sherry Cook. Location and zoning. The leased area is lot number 76 of the Alcova Lake Trailer Park. The park is northwest of Alcova Marina. The park is on mobile home. North and south is RAM. East is PUD. West is UR. So, again, we're out here at Alcova Lake, so as we head out to Alcova Lake right before the marina, on the right hand over the west side of the road, we have the Alcova Lake Trailer Park. That's zone mobile home. See here our zoning, so everything east of Lakeshore is PUD, west is mobile home, and then urban residential further to the west. The county is under contract with the Bureau of Reclamation for the management, development, and operation and maintenance at the Alcova Reservoir. The lots in the park are leased to individuals for use by Neptuna County Parks Department. The setbacks from property lines for the park are 25 feet from adjacent to all public roads. Again, there's the key one we're going to be talking about tonight. 25 feet from all public roads. So, from Lakeshore Drive to the west is 25 feet. Eight feet from all private roads, so that would be the road inside the trailer park is eight feet. 15 feet between mobile homes and five feet from perimeter property lines. Here is our subject property. As you would turn in there, you can see the previous mobile home that reached the end of its useful lifespan and had to be removed. The yellow line there represents the setback area if the setbacks were strictly followed. What the applicant is proposing is this current site plan here. So, you can see there's roughly five feet there where they would be violating the setback area, and that's the bottom line of their request today. These are our site photos, and if you can imagine the blue sky and the blue water out at Alcova Reservoir, that's what you see when you're out at the lake. But criteria for the variance is that when acting upon a variance, the Board shall be guided by the intent and purpose as well as the goals and policies of all the zoning resolution. In addition, the Board shall require showings concerning all of the seven following. One is there exceptional or extraordinary circumstances and conditions applicable to property involved, and literal interpretation of this resolution would cause the property to result in an unnecessary hardship. So, the mobile home that was on the lot was a 12 by 45 and in state of disrepair. The home was removed and the lot was cleaned up. The lot is trapezoid in shape with a limited space. The very smallest park model that they could find would exceed the public 25-foot public road setbacks by about four foot, seven inches. So, in the mobile home world, you have a typical HUD mobile home. A typical HUD mobile home is our typical trailers that are, you know, 10, 12-foot wide by, you know, perhaps 65, 70 or more feet long. The smaller versions are called park models. And so, the applicant, realizing he had a small lot, went to the trailer manufacturer, and that is absolutely the smallest park model they can find. They simply cannot find anything smaller. So, our setback rules are causing an unnecessary hardship in this instance. Staffs propose finding the fact, lot 76 is below average in size when compared to the other lots in the park. There are approximately seven lots of 160 that would not meet setbacks with newer mobile homes. So, as folks replace those, if they can't get one to fit, then it's either unusable lot or they have to come in and get a variance for it. Two is the hardship due to a unique circumstance. Applicant's response, the Alcova Trailer Park is an array of undersized lots that are much smaller than standard mobile home lot sizes. There are utility fixtures owned by the county on lot 76, further limiting the ability to locate a home on the lot. If you look on the, I'll call it the northernly edge of the lot, there are some Neptuna County facilities, park facilities there that do affect the use of their lot. Staffs propose finding the fact, there are 160 lots at Alcova Lake Trailer Park and approximately seven are unique in their size setbacks when setbacks are applied. The setbacks, when applied to the replacement mobile home, makes them virtually unusable without a variance. Number three, the applicant's response, a variance will only allow utilization of lots in accordance with the permitted uses and the existing zoning. Staffs propose finding the fact, the variance is for a minimum lot size, not a use, so no other use would be authorized by the variance. So, this is only a setback variance in this instance, not a use. Will this result in a greater use? Staffs propose finding the fact, the variance would allow the applicant to use and enjoy the lot in a way other than... in a way other landowners currently are using their lots. So, again, the cooks just want to be able to utilize the lot that they pay rent for, and so this variance would allow them to use that lot. Will granting the variance merely serve as a convenience for the applicant, or is it necessary to alleviate a proven hardship? Staffs propose finding the fact, granting this variance will be necessary to alleviate a proven hardship. Without a variance to setbacks, the subject lot is unusable. Again, onto the park trailer manufacturers, and they cannot purchase a smaller lot or smaller home. They've tried to get a smaller one, it can't be done.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Have staff verified that?
Yes, we have. They showed us the catalogs. We called them. They even got ahold of the trailer manufacturer and asked for a custom-built one where they could sever part of the deck off, and they were unwilling to do that. They make them in a production run, and then you get them like this or you don't get them at all. Will granting the variance impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? Staffs propose finding the fact, the variance would not impair the use of adjacent properties or alter the character of the neighborhood. The variance would only allow the applicant to place their home four foot, seven inches closer to the property line. The home would still be over 20 feet away from the property line right-of-way. Not to lose track, too, the old trailer existed there for however many years, and that did not change the character of the neighborhood when that was there. And if anything, this is an improvement of the character of the neighborhood because that old trailer was in terrible disrepair. It wasn't usable. Some rumors was that it was even maybe vermin-infested, so it was good to get rid of it and replace it with a nicer model. Will granting the variance detrimentally affect public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent and purpose of the development plan under the zoning resolution? Staffs propose finding the fact, the previous mobile home on this lot was not within any of the setbacks and had become dilapidated. The removal of the old home and the replacement of the newer home is an improvement on the public health, safety, and welfare for the public. Public comment to date, Neptuna County Development has received no comments on this agenda item. The Neptuna County Parks Department does not have any concerns with this request. Staffs propose motion. Staff recommends a motion and vote by Planning Commission to recommend approval of this agenda item by Board of County Commissioners and incorporating by reference all findings of fact set forth in the staff report in this public hearing. With that, I'd answer any questions you may have.
So, Jason, just a perception I've had for many years when I go out there and see all those trailers. Are there others that are dilapidated and going to get moved out? We're going to be... are we setting a precedent here that we're going to have other trailers or other people come in here and want considerations like this?
Absolutely, and in fact, this Board historically has provided other variances for this very same setback along Lakeshore Drive. So, it has happened in the past. It's happening now, and I would predict it's going to happen in the future on those case-by-case lots. I mean, there's just... Staff points out, there's lots out there that just are so small, they are very difficult to use. And they're very highly desired, so folks don't want to give up that lot. They want to be able to keep it and enjoy it.
So, staff doesn't have any unreasonably dire feelings that by granting this, we're going to have a whole bunch of people come in here and want special considerations?
No, obviously, we would look at them on a case-by-case basis. It's not just because you have a small lot that you have a hardship. You have to prove the hardship, and in fact, in this case, we believe the cooks did prove they had a hardship. And it's because of that shape of the lot. You can see the way that tapers down in that location. That is a very small lot. We would look at each one of them individually and prove that we had indeed a hardship. So, no, we're good, I believe.
Thank you, Jason. With that all open to public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item?
I'm Keith Nakbar, Attorney at Law, 123 West First Street, Suite 205, Casper, Wyoming, 82601. I am here representing Jerry and Sherry Cook, the applicants to this variance request. They are also the leaseholders of lot 76 in... that is the subject property. Just want to point out a couple of things. I think Jason pretty much covered most of what I've had to say, but I would ask you to keep in mind that the variance is minor, and it is very specific to this lot because of the taper of the size of those lots as you get to this point where there's some utilities or utility-type fixtures at the end, and so this lot gets very small. And it's not like they're trying to put a giant trailer on a reasonably sized lot. This is a small lot, and they are putting a small structure on that lot. This would not be an issue if not for the unique size of this lot and the unique shape of this lot where one of the setback lines is really... comes in at an angle. The park model home that they are seeking to place on the lot is in your materials. It's a very nice type of home. They're looking to put a home that essentially is this kind of a home on that lot. And as you can see, the dimension of that is approximately 32 feet, so it's a pretty small... I mean, that's not a lot bigger than travel trailers or many travel trailers. And so, it is small enough to fit on this lot reasonably, but you have this problem that it exceeds the setback by four feet, seven inches. I wanted to also point out something that I think is important to keep in mind. We did an estimate of the distance, just based on Google Maps, we did an estimate of the distance from the traveled portion of the roadway, and what we came up with is we think it's about 50 feet from the traveled portion of the roadway. So, it's less than 25 feet from the right-of-way line, but if you looked at the actual traveled portion of the roadway, we think the home is still going to be approximately 50 feet from that traveled portion of the roadway. And it is still, even so, even with the variance, the home will still be more than 20 feet from the actual right-of-way line. I think the staff pointed out that there are approximately seven lots in this development that have these unique and small sizes. So, while certainly there may be some future requests for similar variances, it seems to me that if people seek to place homes on their lots that are consistent with the size of the lot, I don't think it will open the floodgates to say, "Well, everyone needs a variance because I want to put an 80-foot home on a, you know, an 85-foot lot." So, I think that if the people are reasonable and put a home on the lot that is reasonably consistent with the size of the lot, I think it'll limit the number. And I think that's what you'll need to do, is look at it on a case-by-case basis. So, with that, I'd answer any questions.
No.
No.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Last time. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to Commission members for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move approval of variance request, VC 20-3, as recommended by staff, incorporating findings of fact.
Second.
Second. He beat me.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or any discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. This motion carries unanimously and will be heard in this room by the Board of County Commission. Trish, what date is that?
August 18.
On August the 18th. With that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is a CUP 20-6, a request by Y. Dot Y-Link to construct 105-foot tower for public safety communication, supporting police and fire communications for the state. With that, I'd ask for the staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, CUP 20-6 is a conditional use permit, an application by Jeff Mock and Nathan, I won't even try that, on behalf of Y. Dot and Y-Link. Location and zoning, the proposed tower would be located approximately one mile south of Highway 220 and east of Pathfinder Road. All the subject parcel and all the surrounding parcels are zone RAM, ranching, agricultural, mining. The proposal, the Y. Dot Y-Link has applied for CUP to construct a 100-foot communication tower. The application will be actually for 105 feet to incorporate all the apparatus. By the time we put our lightning rods and tower apparatus up there, we're 105 feet. The tower will be used to provide and expand Y-Link's very high-frequency VHF coverage in and around Alcova. Y-Link is a statewide land-mobile radio network utilized by federal, state, and local agencies for public safety and emergency response. First responders, law enforcement, fire, and public services agencies all rely on Y-Link for communications. Here is our tower location. If we've been out to Alcova Pathfinder, this is along that ridge, if you will, that up from the estates, and we have a ridge line and a plateau before we get to Pathfinder, and this is along that ridge line. Here, again, it's all... the subject area is RAM zoning. Conditional use permit criteria, there's four showings here we need to work on. Granted, the CUP will not contribute to an overburden of county services. Staffs propose finding the fact, granting the conditional use permit will not contribute to an overburden of county services. County services and infrastructure will not be necessary for this conditional use permit. The tower would provide coverage and reach for local law enforcement and emergency services. Two, will granting the CUP not cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems? Staffs propose finding the fact, there'll be no impact to traffic, parking, population density. These towers are not manned. Routine maintenance for the towers and antennas will be limited. Granted, the CUP will not impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood. Staffs propose finding the fact, the subject parcel consists of approximately 15,000 acres. The addition of this communication tower will not impair the use of adjacent properties. The tower will be located in an area that's consistent with communication towers. Again, over the years, we've approved several communication towers along that ridge. This one would be consistent with the other towers that are located. Granted, the CUP will not detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent of the development plan under the zoning resolution. Staffs propose finding the fact, the proposed tower and building are designed to be built and intended for the purpose and will be constructed in accordance with all the necessary standards as well as all applicable building and electrical and plumbing codes. Key communication tower regulations. Artificially lit towers, there is no requirement for lighting of towers until they reach 200 feet. This tower's 105, so there's no artificial... no lit lighting required at the top of the tower. Setbacks from road and structures, 110% of the tower height. The nearest road is one mile away and does meet setbacks. Documentation demonstrating need, the proposal... proposed site is situated to provide effective coverage for the area. The tower is needed to provide Y-Link for statewide public safety communications. Public comment to date, Neptuna County has received no comments on this proposal. Staff sent out public notices to 13 neighbors within one mile. Staff's proposed motion is a motion and vote by the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend approval of the requested conditional use by the Board of County Commissioners, incorporating by reference all findings of fact set forth in the staff report and the public hearing. With that, I'd answer any questions the Commission may have.
Jason, presumably, this is a different animal from the standard cellphone tower, and we're not talking about structural integrity appropriate for Crow Lake locating. This is, I'm assuming, Stand By Yourself, Y. Dot.
We got the applicant here, and we can have that cleared up, but yes, my understanding is this is only for emergency communications.
Thank you.
Tom?
No.
Mr. Chairman, Jason, we visit, I think, about at the lay-down heights. Clarify that again for me, because we're going to be next to the tower that's out there that we can see on the ridge, and we're not going to be 110 feet away from that tower. And you say that... you say the nearest road is a mile, and it meets that setback, but in your presentation, you said the tower and other buildings, I think. Oh, yeah. The nearest road and doesn't. Oh, okay. Setback of the... said from road and structures is 110%. There is, in fact, a structure right next to it, isn't that true? But that doesn't... but the 110% lay-down factor doesn't apply to this?
The 110% applies to roads and occupied structures, houses, commercial offices, things that are occupied by people. So, structures was just a word used in PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jason. With that all open to public hearing, anyone here wishing to speak on this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Nathan Smolinski. I'm with the Wyoming Department of Transportation at 5300 Bishop Boulevard in Cheyenne, 82009. One of the questions that Keith did come up with is regarding to a possible co-locate. This is a standalone, and part of the reason why we're doing this, it's a mission-critical infrastructure. So, the mission we have for this type of communication tower is much different than a cell tower, which is for profit. They have a whole different financial agenda. When we actually put these towers together, we don't want them to fail ever. So, we have different infrastructure as far as backup power, redundancy. The tower build itself is actually built much more robust than what you see on a standard cell tower also there. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Again, I mentioned the fact this is a mission-critical. We did chose this location for two reasons. One of them, the fact that we already have infrastructure in place, and also the coverage that's provided with this location is really going to enhance what we're trying to do in that area. We look back to the fires we recently had last year with Pathfinder. A tower in Elvis, if that was in place, it would have really helped out quite a bit. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Anything?
No.
Go. What's the budget on building a tower like this?
So, generally speaking, when we get asked that question for a Y-Link tower, we usually say anywhere from three-quarter to $1 million. This particular tower is coming in at the way that we did it because it's part of a project of six to 15 other towers for a total of 16, so it's roughly just a hair over three-quarter of a million.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
One quick question. Are you concerned about the lay-down side from the existing tower onto yours?
No. I can tell you why. I did mention these are built... I guess that our towers are built rather robust, all of whom have to pass engineering specs. So, Union, which is the tower that we're going to be building next to, we actually have a pretty strong partnership with them. And by that, what I mean is we actually can look at those engineering specs and make sure that that tower has been built to the standards it should be built to. So, the foundation is there.
You don't have a concern of the...
Not with that tower. Are there concerns in other locations? Absolutely. We've had some older towers, some ones that may not have been built when the cell boom started, and some of those towers, what you started seeing was, "Hey, I have a tower. Why don't you come start hanging things on it?" And before you know it, that tower got to the point where it just couldn't hold anymore. So, with this particular application, we're not concerned.
So, you've looked at that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Nathan. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone else with some... oh, there he is.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Mark Harshman. I am Deputy Chief with Casper Fire EMS, and we are a user of the Y-Link system, which this tower is being built for. This tower is one of 16 additional towers being built throughout the state of Wyoming to fill in communication gap areas. All emergency responders in Neptuna County are on the Y-Link system. This enhancement of developing this site at Alcova will fill in gaps for the Wyoming Highway Patrol, for Wyoming Game and Fish, Neptuna County Sheriff's Office, as well as the Neptuna County Fire Protection District, and Wyoming Medical Center and Life Flight Ambulances. It's been quite a gap in coverage that was identified years ago, and it's been a hard fight to obtain funding to build the tower, and that funding has been secured at no cost to local government, and it's just going to be a very, very good thing for first responders. Any questions? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Guess not. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Turn it over to the Commission. Need a motion, gentlemen? No discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would move approval of conditional use permit 20-6, subject to the findings of fact presented by staff. My second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of this agenda item as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This motion carries, will be heard in this room by the Neptuna County Commissioners. Lost my date.
August 18.
With that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, and that is ZC 20-1, a request to change zoning district classification from urban mixed residential to rural residential 1 for 16 lots in the Alder, Dobles, and Coon subdivisions. With that, I'd ask for the staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, ZC 20-2, one, is a request for a zone change, an application by Stephanie William Kunde. application by Stephanie William Cundall on behalf of various owners. Before we get started into this, I want to make it clear that every applicant, every property owner that's on this has signed the application and wants this to occur. Everybody that's part of this is, is in favor of it. The zone change area is located west off of Ten Mile Road, so if we head west to Casper on twenty-twenty-six, we go past the airport, we hang a left on Ten Mile Road, we head south about halfway between twenty-twenty-six, if you will, and Zero Road, we hit the side roads to go west into this subdivisions. There are twelve owners, sixteen lots as part of this zone change request. The Schlogger subdivision was approved in nineteen-seventy-two with a mix of agricultural and industrial zoning. In nineteen-eighty-three, the subdivision was rezoned to rural-mixed residential, and in two-thousand, rural-mixed became urban-mixed residential. The Coon and Dubos subdivisions were part of an original Schlogger subdivision. According to the landowners in this area, residents have always kept agricultural and four-H animals. Due to a recent request for zoning, the residents were informed that animals four-H are not a permitted use in UMR. They are a conditional use, but they're just not a permitted use. It was agreed that the zone change would comply with all the development plan and achieve the landowner's goal of allowing animals and four-H activities. So here is our area surrounded in the heavier red or purple that we're considering tonight. Not to send us down a rabbit hole, but there are some folks in the northern area that are coming forward in future meetings to also do it. These folks here were very eager and wanted to get the process going, so that's why we have those in front of us this evening. This is looking down Schlogger Road. This is west down Holland Road. This is north down Schlogger. Planning Commission, the board shall require that the applicant provide evidence that the proposed zone change will meet at least one of the criteria. The applicant seeks the zone change under criteria number three, and that is, the existing zoning of land was based on a mistake of fact. All the properties in the Schlogger-Sleb division subsequent lot splits have historically been used and are currently being used for rural residential properties, including housing and raising of livestock and horses. Copies of appraisals noted the zoning as urban agricultural and mixed have been provided. The property owners would like to legally enjoy the use of their land. Staff's findings, the twenty-sixteen development plan for this area is to main agricultural land and county roads. The zone change will increase the minimum lot size for the area and support the development plan with low-density residential development. The minimum district size is fifteen acres in rural residential. The applicant is requesting above the minimum acreage, and it would not be considered a spot zone. Public comment, as of tonight's meeting, two verbal comments in favor and one written comment have been received. The Development Department notified forty-four owners within one mile. Staff's proposed motion, staff proposes a motion and vote by the Planning Commission recommend approval divided the Board of County Commissioners on the proposed zone change from UMR to rural residential one. Staff also recommends a motion incorporate by reference to the findings of fact set forth in the staff report and this public hearing. Really what this is, is the older zonings, as it moved forward, everyone believed they were allowed to have animals. Truthfully, the, the county code enforcement must not have had complaints, never went out there, was never found. This was actually found by a, a property owner listing with a realtor and, and through their research discovered that they have all the horse facilities, but unfortunately, horses weren't allowed unless you had a conditional use permit. When they looked around at their neighbors and saw that they've always historically had animals, they came forward to us. It was a good fit to go to rural residential one. All of our lot sizes all match up. It would maintain their lifestyle. It's in line with our development plan, and staff is in favor of it. So with that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Jim?
No.
I guess my only question would have been from Victor Backus. That's one of the folks that was in the, I don't know if he's here.
Don't believe, don't believe so, no.
Do you know anything about that? About a right-of-way issue and cattle, too many cattle or something?
I do not. Let me see that comment again. So to his first comment, the zoning resolution at one time did try to limit the number of animals per acre, so to speak. There was some ratios in there. That was quickly repealed, and we no longer regulate the number of animals per, per acre. So the first part of the comment would be very difficult to, to resurrect, so to speak. This would be a, a very unique deal. The other instrument, this utility easement that goes through there, the zone change would not affect any easements that are legally recorded. So the zone change would not affect any of that that may exist if they wanted to establish any more access, that the zone change would have no impact on that.
Another question. These existing lots are ten acres, are they?
They're various different sizes.
They're all above five, which is the minimum requirement for rural residential.
Okay.
Tom?
I don't have any questions.
Bob?
No questions.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Thank you, Jason. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item?
No, I've been sitting too long.
No, you've been hanging out down at Glendo too long.
Chairman, Commissioners, my name's David Meyer, twenty-nine, thirty-eight, Ten Mile, eight-two-six-zero-four. This is my wife, Carrie. We're coming on twenty-eight years of living out there now, and we do have horses. And as far as I've always known, I've never seen any zoning changes. I wasn't aware of. As far as I know, we're always ag out there. So this kind of cut me off guard when my neighbor did bring this to me. Basically, I just like the way things have. We will have horses. We always have, had other farm animals. I'm just, I'm all for it.
Okay. Any questions, David? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item?
I'm LeAnn Bain, three-zero-six-two, Schlogger Road, eight-two-six-zero-four. I purchased my property in nineteen-ninety-four. At that point in time, I had an appraisal completed by Neil Hillston, who I doubt would make mistakes about zoning. In my appraisal, which was included in the packet, my property at that time was zoned what was called rural-mixed dash R for residential. I believe what happened is when the zoning regulations were clarified in two-thousand, there was a classification, classification at that, you know, called at that point in time the rural-mixed residential. There was also a residential-mixed, which was an urban designation. And I think clerically, R.A.M. got changed to U.M.A. across the board. And, you know, in two-thousand, I at that point in time had twin boys, and so I could have possibly missed, you know, a notification about a zoning change, but other neighbors in that subdivision would not have. So I believe it was probably, you know, a clerical mistake in the midst of that big conversion. Regardless, as, you know, staff has pointed out, when, you know, we bought those properties, they were already set up as, as rural properties. We've all, you know, had livestock, horses. We all have barns on our properties, you know, and would just like to continue to be able to live as we have. Also, the covenants for Schlogger subdivision, when it was established in nineteen-seventy-seven, if you look at those, they all have designations about livestock and, you know, the housing of the livestock being proper and all that kind of thing. So it's pretty evident that that was the intent of this subdivision from the beginning. And then also the surrounding areas, surrounding properties are all, you know, either urban-ag or, or some other agricultural res, rural designation, so.
Any questions for LeAnn? Thank you.
Thank you.
They're doing good.
Please let me keep them.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item?
I'm LeAnn Robinett. I live at two-eight-seven-five Schlogger Road. I haven't been there near as long as LeAnn has, but historically, there's always been animals in that area. And we have our own cows, chickens, and have had horses in the past and would really like to keep them. We take very good care of our pasture to make sure we don't overgraze it, all that good junk, you know, take care of our fences and our barns. So I think we deserve to keep it that way, if we could, please. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item?
Mark Weston, twenty-eight-hundred Schlogger Road. Just wanted to speak in favor of keeping that as friendly to livestock. Would appreciate that. Got to have a place to keep my horses and mules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this agenda item? With that, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move approval of zone change twenty-six-one, as recommended by staff, incorporating findings of fact.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or further discussion?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For Jason. So there are sixteen lots in here, Jason, I understand, and every one of them is, says this is what they want?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason? As long as those lots have been developed, I'm surprised they weren't grandfathered in.
We surely could have had a grandfathering conversation. If, if you're a person that has animals, to, to prove the grandfathering, we have to go back in time to when it was legally allowed and then forward that all the way forward. Just a lot of, lot of paperwork to prove, and realistically, this was a much easier way to allow them to have the animals and move forward. But yes, if, if they had animals and could prove that there was animals at the beginning and come all the way through, they would have been pre-existing on conforming or grandfathering.
Thank you, Jason. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This motion carries unanimously and will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners in this room, and I've got the date right here, August the eighteenth at five-thirty. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'm more than familiar with that area, and it's been that way since I've been there.
Anything for the good of the order? Any other input or public comment? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
I move adjourn.
Need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.